Good evening. This is the August 14th, 2018 meeting of the City Council of the City of Fredericksburg. We will be called to order at this time. We will be led in opening prayer by Councilor Matthew J. Kelly, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand if you are able.
Most merciful Father, bring peace to those in distress and comfort to those in pain. Please bring our men and women in uniform home safely to their families and be with all our first responders, policemen and firemen also. Always remind us that we are here to serve and not be served and help us do the business that benefits the entire Fredericksburg community. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. It's my pleasure this evening to welcome some new members to our staff, our Fredericksburg team. And I believe these three folks are present. Robin Shugart, Robin would you stand? Robin is joining us as our new Director of Finance. She is a native of Spotsylvania County and has over 15 years' experience in finance departments of three local governments in Virginia, most recently as Director of Finance in Hanover. She was Director of Finance in King George County from 2013 and 2017. So, welcome, Robin. Arnold Rayner, we can't miss you, is joining us as our new Safety Program Manager. A native of Hertford County, North Carolina, he has served for 20 years in various roles in local government in both North Carolina and Virginia. Most recently, he was the Occupational Safety and Health Specialist for the Richmond Police Department. We're delighted to have you, Arnold. Thank you for coming to Fredericksburg. James Newman is our new Zoning Administrator. He grew up in Northern Virginia and has a master's in urban planning from VCU and most recently was in Pluvana County. So, welcome to the burg.
Thank you. I'd like to work with everyone.
Thank you. Well, we have two public hearings that we're going to take as one because they are related topics. Madam Clerk, will you please read item 5A and 5B?
CVAS Properties LLC requests a special use permit for an automotive service use. 5B, CVAS Properties LLC, requests a special use permit for a convenience store with gasoline sales.
I'll call on Mr. Craig.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are two special use permits before the council this evening, one for the automotive service use and one for a convenience store with gasoline sales. As you stated, they're both proposed on one existing parcel at the intersection of Hospitality Lane and Fall Hill Avenue. And being that the technical aspects of each proposal are related and review topics for these uses are the same, we'll present both proposals and suggest that the public hearing for both be combined. We'll just have to be sure at the end that the City Council does take two separate votes on the items. The presentation is in five parts. I'll go through the existing conditions, discuss the proposed use, go through potential impacts and proposed mitigation, discuss compliance with the comprehensive plan, and give the Planning Commission and Staff Recommendation. They are different for these two proposals. The Planning Commission recommends denial of these applications and the Staff Recommendation is to approve of the uses with several conditions, including a denial of direct access to Fall Hill Avenue. The two uses are proposed on a vacant 2.72-acre parcel. It is at the intersection of Fall Hill Avenue and Hospitality Lane here, shown and outlined in cyan. The property is owned Plan Development Commercial and is within the Celebrate Virginia South Development. As such, the property is subject to the Celebrate Virginia South Agreement that put additional rules on the development in 2005 and was subsequently modified in 2007. The applicant proposes to split the property into three parcels, and that's the diagram that you see here at the top right of the screen. The convenience store with gasoline sales, it's a 7-Eleven, is proposed on the westernmost parcel, so that's the one here, shown shaded in gray, adjacent to the Wegmans. The parcel is proposed is roughly one acre in size. The convenience store that you see on the screen is roughly 2,960 square feet. There are 12 gasoline pumps. The automotive service use is proposed on the easternmost parcel, so you can see the parcel here actually at the intersection of Hospitality Drive and Fall Hill Avenue. Again, it's a roughly one acre parcel that they propose to split. The use proposed is a 2,100-square-foot automotive service use. It has three service bays. The applicant does propose to provide a type-D landscaping buffer around the perimeter of the property. That's for both uses. So, if you look at the diagram here, within this area here, here, and then continuing around Hospitality Lane, is proposed a type-D buffer. That buffer would effectively screen the service bays as required by the side agreement. The two uses are proposed to have a shared access through the existing property from Fall Hill Avenue to Hospitality Lane. That access would also serve a third parcel to the north of the site, so here's the access rate right here. This is a third parcel that is proposed to be cut out of the existing 2.72-acre property. It currently does not have a use proposed on it at this time. The largest question about this project relates to the request for a direct access point from the property onto Fall Hill Avenue. The diagram on the screen includes a green and cyan hatch delineating the landscape buffer required as part of the Celebrate Virginia South Agreement. Originally, the buffer was required to be 50-foot wide, contain a berm, and as such would prevent direct access from Fall Hill Avenue to adjacent property. The areas colored green in front of the banks on either side of Gordon Shelton Boulevard and Fall Hill Avenue, and the Wegmans retain those features. So, if you're looking here at this green hatch, that it's the full 50-foot wide with the berm and landscaping as originally proposed. The cyan hatch indicates a narrower buffer between 24 and 42 feet wide, so move over here in front of the Hampton Inn and Suites. That is a 24 to 42-foot wide buffer with a berm and landscaping. And the modification to that buffer was the subject of an amendment to the Celebrate Virginia South Agreement in 2007, and that was done to accommodate the Hampton Inn and Suites. The frontage on Fall Hill Avenue contains an existing access point built prior to the Celebrate Virginia South Agreement. It's indicated by the orange arrows at the bottom left of the screen. So, here is an existing right-in, right-out onto Fall Hill Avenue. It serves multiple parcels, including the Bill Buttram Building and the Sheets. So, it's a shared access point for multiple users, and it was built prior to the Celebrate Virginia South Agreement. This pink arrow here along the most of the frontage leading up to Gordon Shelton Boulevard and crossing the interstate denotes the location of a 10-foot-wide shared access path added to the north side of Fall Hill Avenue by the city when the street was widened last year. And then crossing that here in yellow, you see the proposed site, the Wegmans, Hospitality. This yellow arrow indicates the general location of the proposed access point. The access would be located 292 feet from Hospitality and Fall Hill Avenue intersection. It would include 100-foot turn lane and 100-foot taper, so together collectively 200 feet of turning area off of Fall Hill Avenue into the site. And it would be a restricted entrance. There's a hardscape median there, so it would be right-in, right-out. Whether this access should be permitted is debatable. The proposed access meets standard spacing, taper, and turn lane requirements. It meets the VDOT standards for an access point into a commercial development. The Silver Company provided a second analysis to us yesterday. They had provided an original traffic analysis that showed the lengths of the taper and turn lane required, but we received a second analysis yesterday conducted by SDI engineers. The analysis reiterated the proposed access point met engineering requirements and identified some dimensional issues with adding a second access point from the site Hospitality Lane, and that had been proposed as an alternative to an access point onto Fall Hill Avenue. Providing access to Fall Hill Avenue does break with established city policy, and that's what's led to the Staff Recommendation. The access would cross the landscaping buffer required by the side agreement. No individual access breaks have been permitted along the development's frontage, not for the banks nor for the Wegmans, since the side agreement was initiated. The access break would also cut across the Fall Hill Avenue trail. And then if you look at the diagrams at the bottom of this screen here, when the city widened Fall Hill Avenue, we actually closed down commercial access points, including one to the 7-Eleven, and that's what you see. This is the 7-Eleven that was at the corner of Wicklow and Fall Hill Avenue. This is in 2016. You can see the direct commercial access here. And this diagram on the right is 2018, aerial from 2018. You see the access was redirected to an existing street intersection, and here is the trail that was built by the city there. The result of this is a safer, more cohesive trail network. All of this to say that the Staff Recommendation includes a condition denying access to Fall Hill Avenue. Since the Planning Commission public hearing, the applicant submitted a proposal to build additional trails that would integrate the convenience store and service center into the overall development and citywide trail network, and that's what we see on the screen here. The trail that they are proposing to build would run along Hospitality Lane at the edge of the property here, the full length of Hospitality Lane. It would continue up Carl D. Silver Parkway all the way to the area where the stadium is planned. The UDO and the side agreement contemplate Celebrate Virginia South being a unique environment where strong pedestrian and automobile infrastructure are both provided, both. Building trails connecting the 7-Eleven and Valvoline into the main trail network and to the future stadium would make Celebrate Virginia South a unique commercial development as contemplated by the side agreement and the UDO. The convenience store with gasoline sales and automotive repair services uses are both appropriate for the frontage of a major commercial development with appropriate infrastructure and adherence to the development's vision. The traffic generated by these uses, with or without an access break onto Fall Hill Avenue, will put pressure on the intersection of Hospitality Lane and Fall Hill Avenue. Under the side agreement, the landowner is required to provide half the cost of signalizing that intersection. The city is currently designing a signal for the intersection, and a condition has been added to the Staff Recommendation requiring that the applicant's share of the cost prior to commencement, applicant's share of the cost be paid prior to the commencement of the use. Another kind of infrastructure element here, the crosswalks shown on the GDP do not conform to side agreement standards. The side agreement requires them to be a change in materials, full widths, concrete stamp with a different color material, or brick, or something better approved by the city, one of those two. So, we've added a condition into any approval that states that the, any proposed crosswalks would have to meet that standard, change it from a development agreement into an actual zoning standard. The Planning Commission recommended denial of these applications on July 11th. They concluded that the access break on Fall Hill Avenue was contrary to city policy, and as a result, there were safety concerns about the single connection to Hospitality Lane. The Staff Recommendation of the Planning Commission was to approve the project without access to Fall Hill Avenue and other related conditions. This was all based on our Technical Review Committee review of the project. We did update the conditions based on some of the revised GDP and trail elements that the applicant has resubmitted. The conditions recommended now include studying the Hospitality Lane connection and requiring any improvements needed to make that access safe, maintaining the required 50-foot landscape berm, requiring the half-cost of the signal, providing the trail as shown in the trail exhibit, and requiring that those crosswalks meet the standards of the side agreement. That's the information that I have, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Other questions for Mr. Craig? All right. Is the applicant present, or the applicant like to speak?
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, Jervis Harrison, Silver Company.
Jervis, one second. May I have the computer, please?
Yeah. I think the staff has really stipulated that the use is a use that's reasonable, so I won't belabor the point that the convenience store and the automotive services use is one that's consistent with the comp plan and consistent in the area. So, if the use is consistent, then what are the issues? Trails and berms. We believe that, let's start with the berm. Nowhere in the side agreement have we seen our access or cuts through the berm prohibited. As a matter of fact, there's no limitation on access from Fall Hill Avenue provided via the side agreement. In fact, the side agreement was put in place to shield and buffer the residential uses on the south side of Fall Hill Avenue, mostly along Briscoe Lane when it was done. And if you don't buy that, there were at least three or four changes to the berm between 2006 and 2015 that revised the berm, the 50-foot berm, without any amendment to the side agreement. In 2006, when the Hampton Inn was built, Hampton Inn is the one that's at the intersection right west of fault of I-95 there on the right, going west. When the Hampton Inn was approved, the berm, there was a request that the berm be reduced from 50 feet to 20 feet, and the city okayed that as long as we added plants on top of the berm. That's what we did. That's why when you go out there and you see a berm adjacent to Hampton, the frontage of Hampton, the Hampton Inn, it's 20 feet, it's not 50 feet. In 2007, when the Wegmans came along, there were two alterations to the berm. One had to do with connecting Gordon Ebbishelton to Fall Hill Avenue, which reduced the berm, and the other one had to do with approving the design of widening Fall Hill Avenue at that time. And then, of course, in 2015, when Fall Hill Avenue was widened by the city in VDOT, they not only reduced the berm, but they reduced the berm without replacing plant or putting plants back on top of the berm. The other thing about the berm is, the berm that you see out there today, that's eight to 12 feet high, was never planned or approved or mandated by anybody here. It just so happens that there is additional topsoil associated with the Fall Hill Avenue widening project and the Celebrate Virginia project, and we mounted that topsoil and created a large berm, but the side agreement doesn't even dictate the height of the berm. So, to, I guess to continue to state that the berm limits access from Fall Hill Avenue when there's been at least four or five side agreement, four or five amendments to that and breaks in that berm with administrative approval without side agreement, formal amendments, it's inconsistent, to say the least. And another thing, you know, the berm and the trail, and I'm still on the berm, was made possible by the dedication of right-of-way by the applicant. And because the applicant dedicated extra right-of-way and created an ice berm, it seems that he's being punished, or punished, that's not the right word, he's being limited with access, even though that's not in the side agreement, just because he accommodated the berm and the trail. Go to the other side of the street. There's very little limited access with the approvals of the recent projects. There is no berms. There is no trail. So, you're limiting access on the north side of Fall Hill Avenue because the developer-owner created a berm, but he created a berm that was not even mandated to the height that you see today. So, we just believe that's just a little inconsistent and maybe even a little unfair, but I won't belabor that. In order to mitigate the impacts to the trail, on the trail now, we thought that, can you put the drawing back up? Thanks. We thought that, first of all, we thought it was unreasonable, the discussion about the impact to the trail at the right-in and right-out to the convenience center, because we're talking about roughly 40, 50 feet of a right-in and right-out entrance where we've put in a safe haven mid entrance to make it safer for pedestrians and bikers to cross. When at Hospitality Lane and at Gordon Shelton Boulevard, connection of Fall Hill Avenue's wider, you don't have any safe havens. But that's okay. What's really the point here is that we thought to help mitigate at least that position that the trail was unsafe at our right-in and right-out, we would build over a half-a-mile, or about a half-a-mile of trail down Hospitality Lane and Carl D. Silver Parkway to destinations, large public gathering destinations like the Expo Center, potentially the baseball And we believe that's an improvement as a route for the trail. It also gets you closer to the river and the Fall Quarry Trail than the trail that continues on Fall Hill Avenue and culminates at Sheets. I don't get it. I don't get it. Again, I guess I'd like to reiterate that never was the berm put in place in the side agreement to limit access from Fall Hill Avenue, never. It was to provide a buffer and a screen from the uses on the south side of Fall Hill Avenue, the houses along Briscoe Lane. Well, they don't even need this buffer now because of what's going on on the south side of Fall Hill Avenue. I won't belabor that. You totally understand that. I know you do. We think it's an unreasonable restriction not to allow a right-in and right-out along with the Hospitality Lane entrance. We also think it's not even safe to do that. We really think that you ought to be looking for us to do more than one entrance. Now, these uses are consistent with other uses. They may not be the main uses you want, but they are consistent with other uses. And one other thing about these uses, almost all the uses along Fall Hill Avenue are automotive-dependent uses. Volvo and Mercedes, the hotels, over 300 hotel rooms comes to hotels, visitors, people going to the Expo Center, maybe going to the concerts, to the baseball games, I hope. These folks will need to check their car for gas in the morning before they leave. These are all automotive-dependent uses. Rightly or wrongly, good or bad, this is what we have along Fall Hill Avenue. And we did our best to mitigate the trail impact by building almost a half-a-mile of other trail to destinations that's much more visually pleasing and gets to destinations like the Fall Quarry and the Riverfront, so as to not, I guess, require one using the trail to simply continue along Fall Hill Avenue and see the parking lot of Wegmans and then, cheats. I don't get it. But I think I've made the point. I'd like to introduce Joe Wilson, who wants to make a few comments on our path as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers, I'm Joe Wilson. I live at 913 Caroline Street in Fredericksburg, and I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you. Having sat in your seat for four years, I can appreciate the job that you do. I jokingly say that I have to watch you on television at least once a month to remind myself why I didn't run for a second term. I would like to bring up slide number two, please, if we could. And do any of these gentlemen have a laser pointer? No laser pointers? All right. Slide number two. There you go. The first comment that I'll make is that I am involved in trying to develop the Valvoline site. And I have been advised that Valvoline is not interested in that site unless they have a right turn out onto Fall Hill Avenue. I've heard that 7-Eleven has taken the same stance, and I believe the city manager's talked to Valvoline and maybe to 7-Eleven and might confirm my comments. So, what that boils down to is lost revenue for the city. Having served on the Economic Development Authority for eight years, I can tell you that economic development is foremost in my mind. Some of you may remember, and I'll look at Billy Withers and Matt Kelly, and remind you, it wasn't too many years ago when we couldn't make payroll in the city. Anybody remember that? Yep. And the city employees would rush to cash the paychecks to make sure that they would, they were good. That wasn't too many years ago. That was in the 1990s. Economic development was foremost in our thoughts. And then came along Central Park, which bailed us out. Right? It pulled the fat out of the fire. I'd like to point out over here, if I may walk over. You have three sites, Valvoline, 7-Eleven, and a third site yet to be developed, but not having an access right turn onto Fall Hill Avenue. By having, not having a right turn out of that development, you're forcing all three of those retail developments to exit through one exit area onto Hospitality Drive. Now, it's my guess that in five to 10 years, we may be, we'd be in the city, come back and ask if we could put another access entrance or exit area onto those sites, because you're putting a lot of traffic onto Hospitality Drive. And with the ballpark and people coming out, it will be nice to have more than just one Not too many years ago, we were building our trail system. Great thanks to Matt Kelly and others for having that trail system developed into what it is today. But when we decided that we were going to put the trail system across Blue-Grey Parkway, citizens were saying, what in the world is the city thinking about? To put a trail system across four lanes of traffic going in different directions and two and two turn lanes. That's six full lanes of traffic. And the joke was, the lawyers will have a field day with that. With all the injuries they were gonna have, pedestrian injuries, and so on. To my knowledge, there has not been an incident of an injury at that intersection from the trail being built across Blue Gray Parkway. And then we come along and we say, well, we're gonna put a trail, uh, across Route One. Route One, the main, what used to be the main artery between Maine and Florida, we're gonna build a trail system where hikers, bikers, walkers can push a button and cross over a major artery like Route One and Jefferson Davis Highway. Well, we did it. Despite the critics who said that it would be a disaster. I don't know of any situation where anyone using that trail has failed to get across safely since we did that. And now we're coming to you. And we're saying to you, let us put in a right turn off of this property. And what we will do is, across two lanes of traffic, put in a stamped pedestrian crossway for the trail with the push-button signal that gives the pedestrians the right of way to cross. And that's considered the hazardous. Think about it. The other point I wanna make is that there's nothing in the agreement that says anything about the height of the berm, uh, how high it should be. Jervis Benchin, that VDOT wanted to pile their, topsoil on top of it, which made it higher than it was originally put in. Silver Companies granted that request without question. So I say to you, you know, let's use some good common logic here. There's nothing wrong with a right turn lane onto Fall Hill out of that property. And if we're gonna kill two deals because we think that there is a problem, we need to rethink that. So I ask you to use your good common sense and logic in making a decision as to whether or not to grant that access on the Fall Hill tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Hi, good evening, uh, Madam Mayor, City Council. Thank you for letting me, uh, address you this evening. Rob Murphy with Cushman and Wakefield, five seven five Maryville Center Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. I'm here, uh, representing Valvoline, uh, as their, uh, developer. We've been working on this site for a period of years. Valvoline Corporate has been very interested in Fredericksburg for quite some time, and, uh, we were very excited when we were able to, uh, focus in with the Silver Companies on this site. A few things to share. This is a corporately-owned facility, so this is not a franchisee. So this is Valvoline Corporate out of Lexington, developing this site. It's part of a larger, um, entry into Virginia for them. Uh, we're building out six to eight stores in various regions, and this, uh, location would fit very nicely with the overall development plan. Our business is one of convenience. So we do very well when we locate nearby busy roadways, uh, when we locate nearby, uh, grocery stores and other, uh, types of, uh, businesses that someone on a Saturday or on their way home from work or running around on the weekend, um, is visiting and, and carrying out more important activities. Most people don't wake up every morning and decide, boy, it'd be a great day to spend a whole bunch of time changing my oil and sitting in line somewhere. So for us, uh, convenience, um, for the customer is imperative. Uh, an average oil change happens in about ten minutes. The customer doesn't leave their vehicle unless they're having a, uh, their tires changed. That's part of our service model. That helps differentiate us from a lot of our competitors. The convenience piece is, is tied to speed, proximity, to other businesses like grocers, as well as easy access. Both onto the property, off the property. And, uh, also if they were to pull in and determine that there's a lo- a, a few other cars queued up in line, they have to be able to, what we call, escape. So that's why on our site plan, you'll see a drive that circulates around our building. We call that the escape lane so that somebody is not inconvenienced if they pull up in line, see a bunch of people and say, gee, I don't have time to wait twenty minutes. So they, they can have a path to travel out. Equally as important, um, is that, uh, escape lane for purposes of serving our facility. So a Valvoline, unlike a lot of other automotive uses, nothing is, is left on-site. Nothing occurs outside of the building. There's no tire store, there's no batteries, there's nothing outside of the physical facility. All the oil, all the products are contained within the building. Customers do not leave their vehicle overnight. There's, there's no such thing as a drop-off. You're in your vehicle and through and out. And, um, that, uh, that escape lane allows our, our truck to pull in and, uh, basically access a door on the side of the building where they put their hoses in to pump out the waste oil, pump in new product, and similarly come around the building in a straight truck to drop off things like air filters, wiper blades, things like that. So it's a very clean operation. It's not, uh, what you would typically see as an automotive use. We hire professional landscape crews. Uh, we, we irrigate and professionally landscape all of our facilities. You're not gonna see, you know, one of the oil change technicians in a dirty uniform pushing a broken-down lawnmower. We're, we're more than happy to accommodate, um, uh, staff's requests and, and the requirements for the landscaping, uh, around the property because, quite honestly, we're trying to attract a patron that, um, uh, does not want the typical experience of, uh, of a dirty, you know, service-type center, uh, where they're gonna drink burnt coffee or, or, or sit in a broken, uh, chair in a waiting room. So, um, the location is, is really, uh, great for us. That said, it, it absolutely does not work for us if we cannot have both the access off of Hospitality as well as Fall Hill. If we were simply the only tenant going on there, that would be the case. But also coupled with other tenants, uh, adjacent tenancy, you know, we can't have that kind of traffic flow bunching up. We won't have the customer flow. The business would fail. Uh, and, you know, Valvoline's been doing this long enough to know, um, what works operationally for them. And the absence of, of two, uh, means of ingress and egress from the parcel creates a failed business model. Which I, I think is probably similar to, um, you know, uh, Seven-Eleven, our, our co-tenant. You know, w- we recognize the sensitivity to the access off of Fall Hill and honestly, w- we hope that, uh, you'll consider what exists, uh, already for, uh, shared access to Sheets and, and the other businesses is down, that are down, further down the way. You know, really, we're asking for the same thing here. Is, is a shared access for multiple tenants, uh, to this, uh, group of parcels. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Certainly happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Yes. Vice Mayor Withers.
Thank you for coming down and thank you for. Thank you for being interested in this site. I'm, I'm curious, uh, that, when you decided on the site, did you have any idea that, that's, that normally we would not make a cut in, in Fall Hill Avenue for that site?
No, we, you know, we were not, uh, aware that, uh, that it was prohibited to, to have access.
So, so nobody, it was just assumed that, that that would happen? Is that, is that what you, what you're saying?
Uh, you know, quite honestly, we, I mean, when we evaluate sites, we look at so many that, uh, you know, there's, I, I, I guess, sure, we assume that we'd be able to create.
That was never brought up into the discussion?
What's that? That we couldn't have access?
Yeah.
No, no. It was, uh, it was always, you know, and based on our touring the market and seeing other cuts, uh, down along Fall Hill.
You know, it's obvious that, that access is important to you. I'm just surprised that y- you didn't get further down that road before spending all the time on this particular site, not knowing that whether or not you'd have access.
Sure. Well, we did our due diligence to understand, or, from what we were able to determine, there was nothing that specifically prohibited, uh, the access.
Okay. Well, thank you, and thank you for your interest in the city. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions for, uh, is it Mr. Lakey?
Murphy.
Murphy? I am so sorry. I apologize.
I probably rambled a little bit, so I apologize.
I should've asked Mr. Murphy. Counselor Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Mr. Murphy, was there ever any consideration to two entrances, ingress and egress, both on Hospitality Lane instead of one on Hospitality and one on Fall Hill?
So it was proposed, um, you know, the challenge as, as we see it, based on the way the sites lay out and the three parcels, is where those two access points could be and, and still create a proper circulation and flow to allow us to not only service the facility with our, with our trucks and supply vehicles, but also create the, the proper flow onto and off of the parcel from our patrons and, and the adjacent tenancy. You know, we looked at quite a few different options, working with the Silver Companies, trying to understand if there's another way to, to approach this. And, you know, I understand there was even a conversation of trying to do some cross-access with Wegmans, which, uh, I don't think went very far. But it, um, really, in, in the absence of, of those two access points, just knowing how our customers behave, understanding the co-tenancy, we don't see a way that, uh, two access points off of Fall Hill creates a workable solution, or off of Hospitality, sorry, creates a workable solution. And I appreciate you asking that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is, uh, Keith Otra. I'm a senior engineer at Sullivan Donahue and Ingles. I'm at one zero, uh, seven two zero, Columbia Drive in Fredericksburg. There were two, um, two items that I wanted to respond to. One, uh, specific comment relevant to the, relative to the, uh, permission to have an access off of, uh, off of Fall Hill Avenue and assuming that we were allowed to. I, I just wanted to reiterate that there was no technical impediment to that, neither in the side agreement nor in, uh, in access regulations, stipulating that we weren't allowed to have that access. So until it was denied, it was assumed, you know, it was, it was pursued as acceptable, uh, being as it's technically capable. The other point that was just made relative to having two access points on Fall Hill Avenue, there was a mem- hospitality, excuse me. The two access points on Hospitality. The one would be considerably near the signal. And we had offered a, a brief memorandum related to that specifically as it was the, uh, that second access point would be considerably closer to the signal. And that, that action would defy numerous different access regulations relative to VDOT, relative to, uh, you know, the, the safe haven area, if you will, in advance of a signal. Where that access in va- in advance of a signal is far, uh, less safe, obviously, than a right and right out after the s- after the signal. And, uh, and again, to reiterate the point of having the traffic coming through the right in, right out and not through the signal, not through that right-hand turn, you basically allow all that traffic, safe and convenient access onto Fall Hill Avenue, which they would presumably, uh, be going, at least in large part. Instead of loading up that right-hand turn, uh, leaving Hospitality on Fall Hill Avenue. There were just a handful of points that were made that I wanted to clarify. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public here who would like to make a comment? If so, please give your name and address when you approach the podium and respect the five-minute limit that we apply to public comments.
Harriet Rose Sisson of Fredericksburg. Good evening. I, I just wanted to cover some of the stuff I'm hearing. Haven't worked with boards, commissions, and councils. There's one thing that comes up, and that's equitable enforcement. What you do for one, you do for the other. But there are some things that trump equitable, equitable enforcement, and that would be health and safety. And also, because a board, commission, or council has done something in the past, maybe they've decided that wasn't the best decision, they have the right not to waive their rights and consider what's before them today. The berms that were built, I think, are attractive, especially when they're landscaped. And maybe you all don't have grounds for dictating what size, what length, what have you. The developer did it. VDOT did it. To me, the council has the right to say, you know, this looks good. I think we should do more of this. So I, I wouldn't want you to say, well, just because you didn't have groundwork for what was done in the past. If it works for the city now, then continue it. You may have to discuss that with your city attorney, of course. The trail being inter- let me put it this way. The way I saw it, the trail was interrupted by a driveway. And that's a safety issue to me. That's one thing I think you need to think seriously. Also, if you're gonna have them coming out on Fall Hill Avenue and you've got red lights with lots of traffic stacked up, how long do the people who want to use the trail wait? How long do the cars coming out of the gas station wait, et cetera? I don't know the traffic study for that, that the, this city did. Making money is good. Developers who come in and do things that put tax dollars into our pocketbook are very good. But I don't think we should do it at the expense of the city. And if we've got safety and health issues here, if we've got things that have changed and we like the change and we would like to do more of that, uh, I think those need to be considered. When I worked with, uh, this is before I went on the planning commission, uh, at West. When I worked with, when I used to go to the council meetings and the planning commission meetings, we had a developer, and I noticed he always came in with his development and he had the same issues that the neighbors got upset with. And the city council would say, well, let's see if you can go back and work something out with the citizens. And he always had the five same solutions. Now, because I went to the council meetings and the planning commission meetings all the time, I saw this. Typical homeowner did not see this. And so one time he came in and he had a big development, two-story buildings right next to one-story subdivision, which happened to be Eichler's, and the Californians are very proud of Eichler. He's the one that started the developments of open concepts and home. Only thing is, he also had big windows. And he had courtyards within the house. And this two-story development was gonna look down into all of that, and the neighbors were upset. So I worked with the neighbors to, to go before city council. And city council worked out a compromise. Two-story houses, yes, but they allowed them to go ten feet closer to the sidewalk, twenty-foot frontage instead of thirty. That got the houses away from the Eichlers. And then they compromised and said, you can put a second story on, but you've gotta move it back. You can't have it going all the way to the back of the house. And so everybody seemed to be happy except the developer, who walked out very angry and, and we happened to be sitting on the aisle. And we heard him walk by and say, this development will never be built. Well, it was built. It was built by a man who bought the project, built it, and made money. So I get a little worried sometimes. And I don't think, I've seen this in this city council, but I haven't been back home very long. I, I don't like city councils who get nervous because they're not gonna have tax dollars come in. I'd rather see the next developer do a better job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Is anyone, was there anyone else who would like to speak? We do allow the developer, the applicant, to respond to any questions that are raised. So if the applicant has another, or another speaker.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, my name's Carl Holtgren with Ramey Kempin Associates. We're a traffic engineering firm in Glen Allen, Virginia, and we're helping, uh, Mr. Harrison with this request. Just wanted to, uh, not take even the whole five minutes, but just kind of echo, um, what some of the other speakers have said, uh, starting with Mr. Craig at the beginning with his introduction, where he, he said that the, uh, you know, that the turn, the, um, right and right out driveway on Fall Hill Avenue does meet current VDOT spacing standards from intersections. right-out driveway on Fall Hill Avenue does meet current VDOT spacing standards from intersections. And our studies show that the right-turn lane is warranted, based on the projected traffic volumes into the 711 and the Valvoline, and that the 100-foot turn lane and 100-foot taper meets standards as well. There's been a couple of comments about safety for the people using the trail and crossing the right-in, right-out. And I'll just point out that, you know, the site distance there is good in both directions, that, you know, it's a fairly level, you know, tangent piece of road. So, there really should not be a major safety problem for people using the trail, seeing vehicles using the driveway, and vice versa, people using the driveway, being able to see users of the trail. So, I just wanted to point that out to you. And, you know, having a second point of access to this collection of parcels, I think, is very important as well. If the only access is onto hospitality, that's going to put a lot of pressure on Hospitality Avenue. Based on the layout of the site and the location of the 711 in particular, we think the right-in, right-out will take about half of the traffic that would use those three parcels, that roughly 50% of the traffic would use the right-in, right-out, and 50% would use Hospitality, the driveway on Hospitality. So, that's, you know, the access plan, I think, balances the traffic in and out of the site very well, approximately 50/50, which is exactly what you'd want. So, just want to make those couple of points. If you have any specific traffic questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Not at this time, apparently. But thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right. Jac.
May I comment as a developer?
Yes.
In order to be fair, Councilman Withers, you pretty much pinpointed your comments to the Valvoline representative as to what made them think they could get an access on the Fall Hill Avenue. I have read that agreement more than a half dozen times, and there's nothing, absolutely nothing, in that agreement that would prohibit access to Fall Hill Avenue. Thank you.
May I ask you a question? May I ask the question?
Yes.
Did you understand the precedents that were set by not allowing access to other properties along there, as they had requested? Did you get into that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak as a member of the public to this matter? Then I will declare the public hearing closed. I will remind the council that there are actually two separate votes that are required on this matter, because there are two parcels. Counselor Frye.
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. I have a question for staff, if that's okay. And whoever has the answer can answer. But more or less, I know there was a, this is not directly to this project, I just want to make that clear. But I know as a city, we missed a mark on one thing when Fall Hill was done and the trail was done, and that was the extension of the trail to Riverside Manor. And I know I brought that up, like, I want to say, last year or so, about the sidewalk connectivity. But does anybody on staff have the timeframe of when that would be completed? Or I can't remember where we stand with that. And so, the public knows there was a request for sidewalk extension going to Riverside Manor. And more or less, to be clear, it's like a, it's not, I want, in a sense, it's a lower-income neighborhood, but it's, that's the best way I could put it. And it wasn't connected, which is why I say, as a city, we missed a mark on connecting that portion. But does anybody have an answer on that?
Well, to address both your points, Mr. Frye, the reason that the sidewalk was not extended beyond Carl D. Silver Parkway was because the western end of the roadway project was basically at the sheets, and VDOT would not agree to extend sidewalk beyond the vehicular improvements. But the answer to your second question is, actually, that was discussed this morning in a meeting that Eric Nelson and I were in with the VDOT representatives. The project to extend the sidewalk to River Road, approximately River Road from Carl D. Silver Parkway, is a fiscal year 2020 project, beginning July 1. So, we'll be undertaking that project in the July 19 to June 20 period.
Thank you. Mayor Greenlaw, my reason for asking is just, with everything, everything is a package. I know folks look at us as council, and we're voting on this one thing, but we have to look at everything. So, that's why I'm asking, because, you know, for folks that, we promote ourselves as a walkable city, and so on and so forth. And I just, it's my job to make sure that everybody can walk safely, just as we're discussing right now, to get there. So, I just wanted to ask that question, because that's where, exactly the project we're talking about, and where it stops at, there's an accessibility problem that the city has. And I say the city, and Mr. Frye, I'd love to call out VDOT, too. They should have extended it. But, I mean, as a representative, I take responsibility. Until we get it, I'll say it's my fault, until we get it. But that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, a quick comment. Thank you, former Councilman Wilson, with the comment with regards to my involvement in trails, but I would have to say that credit in that regard probably goes more to former Councilor George Solley and working in his commission. I know Counselor Devine was involved in it also. I was there for voting on a lot of those projects, but was not directly involved in it. Any part I played in it primarily was finding money from VDOT to help fund them, but planning and the people and the volunteers, that is, and a lot of volunteers, a lot of people deserve credit for that. In regards to the issues before us, a lot was brought up this evening. The council received some information relatively, I think, as of today, or today, to look at, and some comments were made about traffic studies that I think need to be looked at. And we had a kind of a very good series of comments and questions on this that I think we need to think into, and would ask that we defer action on this tonight, as we did have debate. We usually do not vote on the same evening where we have some discussion back and forth on an issue.
You're making that in the form of a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
You know, you've seconded some of my motions to put off stuff, so I'll second yours and go along with putting it off. I don't think it's going to change the way I feel, but I'd be happy to always take another, additional look.
Counsel Kelly, does that, we need to do that for both?
Do you want to do one for each?
What's the timeframe?
We can bring it back to the next council.
Next council meeting. All right, timeframe is next council meeting. And this has to be done for each of these proposals, I would presume. I don't think one motion, could we do it in one motion for both? Madam City Attorney?
I think you could.
We can. All right, you would like this to apply to both?
Both, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I assumed as much, but just want to make sure that Madam Clerk is very clear on what the motion is. Counselor Frye.
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. And just for the record, I will not support the motion, just on the sake of extending projects in some, that's just my opinion. I think we see the information, and it's cut and dry as yea and nay to me. So, that's just my take on it. Thank you.
Thank you for explaining your vote. Is there any other comment or discussion? If not, I will call for the vote.
Motion passes 6-1. Frye voting again.
Thank you. I appreciate all the work that's been done on this, and I appreciate the offer of extending trails. I think we'll have a good discussion. We do not have anyone signed up tonight to speak during our open mic, if you will. So, we will proceed to the council agenda. Does any counselor wish to add anything to the council agenda? Counsel Frye.
Murder Free Fredericksburg, please.
Murder Free Fredericksburg. That will be item 7B. Are there any other additions? All righty. I will call on Counselor Graham for a uniform policy relating to the allowance of accessory dwelling units on existing residences. Counselor Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I asked for this council agenda item to be added tonight, because I wanted to start a public dialogue about a simple incremental change to our existing zoning regulations. Accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, are nothing more than small attachments to an existing residence, or a small standalone structure on a homeowner's property. Currently, these types of additions are forbidden in the city, and I'd like for council, staff, and citizens to find a way to change that. ADUs have numerous benefits at virtually no additional cost to existing infrastructure or local services. For example, let's consider a couple currently living in Fredericksburg, where both are retired and have adult children with families of their own. Now, at least one of those families may want to move back and live nearby, but they could be priced out of Fredericksburg, given the sharp increase in real estate prices over the past 20 years. With ADUs, the family could move into the existing home, and the now grandparents could live in an apartment on top of the garage, just as an example. And they're no longer responsible for maintaining a house that's now too large for their needs. And in fact, ADUs have gained the nickname granny flats, because, just for that reason. They're a great way for multiple generations to remain in the same city. And in fact, AARP has endorsed the concept of ADUs, and has even drafted a model local ordinance in partnership with the American Planning Association. It's an ordinance whose general framework has been adopted by Washington DC, Portland, Oregon, the state of New Hampshire, the state of California, and others. ADUs allow aging in place while allowing the next generation an opportunity for homeownership and to give their children the same quality of life, you know, here in Fredericksburg, that they themselves were allowed to enjoy. And it's for these reasons, and many others, that I would like for council to discuss whether we would like for staff to begin drafting an ordinance, so that council, and more importantly, the public could review and discuss. Thank you.
Counsel Vice Mayor Withers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You say that there are small additions on the back of homes. Well, some of the additions that I've seen on the back of these homes that are second, are not small additions. So, one of the things that bothers me is a second unit on a home that takes up a whole backyard, in essence, in an old subdivision with smaller homes, takes away the use, a lot of the use, certainly diminishes the use of the backyard of the adjoining home. So, you know, I'm all in on trying to, you know, go in on what you're doing, but I think it ought to be some limitation on lot coverage, especially in our old existing subdivisions, let's say, built prior to 1980, I don't know, but whatever you come up with. But keep in mind, and I'd be happy to ride you around town sometimes and show you some of these things, and show you what I would like, you know, to make sure it doesn't happen with this type of addition. So, I'm not opposed to it, but at the same time, I'd like to see some limitations on lot coverage. Not only with that, but some of these redevelopments on empty lots in these old subdivisions that take up approximately 90% of a lot, when the next door, the houses on either side, take up probably 30, 40%. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Withers. And I'm more than happy, you know, to work with council, staff, and whoever to, you know, determine what we want those parameters to look like. If there's going to be some setback requirements, or some, you know, lot percentage requirements, of course, that only makes sense, and it needs to fit the character of the city. I'm not opposed to that at all. I just want to make sure that we have the option, and, you know, and create that approval process, so that people can begin doing that, because right now, they don't even have that option, and I just want to make sure that it's something that people can start if they want.
Well, I'll defer to the, Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are about to embark, and Jason, you're on the committee now to start working on our, and good luck and all the success from that project, on the affordability issue of housing. And I think this would be a good test to take through the committee that currently exists, that you and Counsel Frye are on, and maybe bring that up as kind of a pilot discussion, because also, we're about to embark on hopefully hiring somebody to do a bigger study and broader study, but this is obviously a component of that. And I would not see an issue where you could kind of bring something out of the committee, because you have to keep people sitting in the room with you that can help you with that and get that moving. So, if we do it in that context, I don't think there's, I would not have any problem with it at all.
I would defer the staff as to where it best lays, but it's also something that can be incorporated into our street, our planning, our neighborhood plans, and that we're working on, too, because those are going to take into consideration some zoning options and some changes as well. But I'll defer the staff as to where it best should be. Mr. Johnson, you have a thought?
Staff is very willing to take this on as a topic. I think there are a lot of model ordinances, and other communities have already plowed the ground, so to speak, on this, and I think we can come back to council, address the concerns that have been raised, and address the issue that Counselor Graham has brought forward. Let's talk amongst ourselves, and to see if we want to do this as part of the area plans, or do it as a freestanding element. I think the idea has a lot of merit. The Housing Action Plan is going to be a few months before it goes out to even be bid, and then we have time for them to prepare the plan. I suspect Counselor Graham doesn't want to put this off for nine months. He'd like to see something sooner than that. So, let's do our research, and we can come back with some options, and discuss it in an appropriate work session in a month or so.
Okay. We have a couple of counselors, Mr. Baridi?
No, I support that recommendation, bringing it back to work session in the next 30 to 60 days is perfectly appropriate. I think Mr. Kelly's right, it probably could fit into the existing work product of affordable housing, but let us talk a bit more about that and bring back a more formal plan.
All righty, Counsel Devine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, this actually had come up several years back, when we started talking about other uses and other rentals and things like that. So, I look forward to the discussion. I know that we got some great feedback when we were looking at Airbnb-type uses for homes. We also had comments when we were looking at chicken coops in the backyards, and how much space we needed even for a chicken coop. So, I think there's a lot to look at, and I think one of the big concerns that has come up when these type of issues have come up is the grandfather aspect of it, that the additional primary use may be for a grandparent or whatever. But I think the fact that we are, we have a university and a number of, you know, students who are transient in our community, means that that's a very likely use of some of these dependencies, and that's a different impact perhaps than a grandparent, or aunt, or uncle, or grown child, or something. So, I think there's a lot to look at. I certainly want to look at it, and I'm really interested in hearing from the community, so.
Counsel Duffy.
I was going to make the same thought, make the same point. No, not about chicken coops. Although I spent some time in my life cleaning chicken coops. You know, I do worry, I think we should think through what impact this might have in the college community, how those uses might exacerbate some problems that we already have. But I think it is important to see our neighborhoods work for 21st century living, too, and beyond. So, I'm very interested in learning about it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Graham. Item 7B, Murder Free Fredericksburg. Counsel Frye.
I just wanted, I just had a comment on this.
Oh, you had a comment on this, I'm sorry.
No, thank you very much, Mayor Greenlaw. I just wanted to chime in on it, and I would just ready to throw a second out there, just for something creative, something different for us to work on. And I saw something this morning where folks were taking, like, construction conduit concrete, big pieces of concrete, eight-foot-tall concrete, like drain pipes, and they were making, like, studio-type apartments out of that. And so, that's, it'd be interesting to see where these, where this conversation goes to, and what's allowable and what's suitable. You know, so I guess, I don't know, you know, I don't want folks sending grandma to the home and telling, you know, well, you just go to the conduit, or you go. Because there's so many things that can happen from this, but... Because there's so many things that can happen from this, but it was an interesting, you know, piece that I read this morning of creativity, and when you get to the fact that some folks have limited options on where they can stay in, so, but that's that for that. That's all I had to say to that.
Okay. Council Kelly?
I think we would, are going to have a very good conversation on this as this topic moves forward, but one of the things I do want to make sure of as we go on, and the suggestion of keeping it within the existing framework that we have, is anything coming out of this sooner or rather than later than what we do our overall plan, it needs to be brought to us in the context of how this is meeting our goals to that end and not be something looked at as a separate issue. I think sometimes we have a problem getting very narrow-focused on something and lose the sight of the bigger picture. So, I'm hoping as this comes forward, it comes forward in the context of, we think this is a great idea because it'll meet these needs, and we're looking at these other things, and this is how it fits in to that overall design. That would be my only request. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Now, Council Fry, item 7B.
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. Item 7B is murder-free Fredericksburg, and for folks who don't know, I usually bring this to the table every so often for the hopes of not having a homicide in the city of Fredericksburg or anywhere, but I'm a city rep 22401, but we almost had good news. We almost went, the total of 12 months, we almost went that long. I think we're very close to what happened last year with a homicide, and just last week, which everybody knows when the area was on lockdown and whatever happened in the city last week, there was, which ended up being a homicide, and also a suicide. And I actually know, I know these families, and it's a tough issue, and I wish it was something I could do. I know, I know that, like, negativity sells, and I'll just give the public a prime example. We've been doing a gun give-back for, I think, five times now, five years or so. And excuse me for being upset, but it's real. So, I personally invited the news folks to Fredericksburg for what we were doing here, which I thought was great from the beginning. And I always got excuses. I have an email trail of me inviting everybody. I've reached out to the governor. I really don't care what I say about it, because I've reached out to everybody. I want the folks in Fredericksburg to know that if you name a person or department, I've reached out, and everybody's busy. And, you know, it's not, it's not a real issue right now. I'm pretty sure if it was happening to their neighbor, their kid, or their kid's schoolmate, I'm pretty sure it would be a big issue at that moment, but for some reason, it's not. In Fredericksburg, we make all the bad news, but we do a lot of great things. And it's amazing how, like, I think it takes, I learned just last week how long it takes for a helicopter to get here from DC, and if I'm not mistaken, it's eight minutes or 10 minutes. I just learned that last week based on the murder, excuse me, a shooting. I take that back. Based on the shooting. I learned that just last Friday. So, I don't, I don't care what folks say about me, about what I say, but I want to say, like, even to the media folks, like, shame on you for emphasizing on negativity instead of helping the situation. And that's my opinion, but it's like, I assume that if, and this is not what I'm going to do, and I'm just throwing it out there, I assume if I stood on the steps of City Hall and shot a gun five times with a letter saying, "We collect guns in the city," or if you need help with somebody with, you know, that could be suicidal or on the verge, I assume that in 10 minutes, there would be a helicopter wondering what the councilman's doing, shooting on the steps of City Hall. And it's like, is that my only option to get the word out with that note, when they zoom in and see the note saying, "Hey, we can help you," you know? So, I just wish that folks knew the options that we have here, and of course, things will happen, but these are like the worst scenarios. Last year, a young lady was shot. It was a month after graduation. This year, last Friday, this young lady that was shot, and I know Council Duffy and Mr. Devine, I know you guys taught these kids. My wife's an educator. My wife, you know, taught these kids. This is real life. I don't try to get too personal. I have a kid that just graduated with this young lady, a month ago. They had their first part-time job together at a fast-food restaurant, and it's real, it really hits home, and I want the public to know, we have a policy or a program in the city of collecting weapons, and if somebody has a weapon in their home, or they know somebody who has a weapon, if they have access to taking that weapon, especially when they think that something may happen, or why did this kid have a weapon, all you have to do is, you can call 911 if you want to, you can call 543721010. You can call us in the city, you can email me. I've said it a million times, it was a situation at 12:30, midnight, somebody called me, and I collected a weapon, myself. Somebody called me. So, imagine what was happening that night if I got the call. So, I want more folks to know, because after all the media frenzy, I didn't hear once that, by the way, the city of Fredericksburg collects guns. If there's one laying in the closet under your kid's bed or whatever the case, I never heard that, once. I never heard what we do for, let's say, I'm not saying what it is, but it could be mental illness. That stuff doesn't get out there, but the worst part of it will get out there. So, I want to give kudos to our city and what we really do, and not, you know, what's out there. Things do happen, but it's hard to deal with it when, knowing that our city works hard to try to prevent, not saying that you can't, but if the word was out a little bit stronger, "Hey, if there's a weapon out there, you can turn it in." We do it, we have an annual event, but there's an open-door policy at all times. No questions asked. We don't care who the gun came from. If you used a gun before, I guarantee you probably use it again because it's already been used before. Just turn the thing in. So, sorry for getting emotional, but it's real to me. I've seen it more, I've seen it too many times, and that's all I have. And then I'm gonna throw one more thing in there, not to take too long. Give some kudos to our police department, and I try not to get in things that I have nothing to do with, but we had an officer that was injured a few weeks ago as well. And this is the next council meeting, I think, since that's happened, so I'm just bringing that up, and I'm not going to go too much in depth, but we have folks that protect us, and the phone call, the phone call comes in, and somebody has to go, and it's an officer, and then something happens. I don't know what happened, I can't speak on it, but an officer was injured. And in the same scenario, there was, you name it, 100 folks, helicopters, all over. Four days later, there was an event called Piece in the Paint in Mayfield. Probably was 700 folks out there, maybe more. I help every year with that program. And guess who was out there? Police officers. But that's the stuff that folks don't see, even four days after being injured. You know, a colleague was injured in the quote-unquote "bad" neighborhood, and out there with everybody else was our police department, right in the middle of everything, for a fun day. And that's the stuff that people don't see, but if something happens real bad, oh, it's all out there. So, if I was a millionaire, I would create a good news channel or something, but I'm not. I'm just Chuck Fron and City Council Fredericksburg, so. But much respect to what the city does, and rest in peace to the young folks who lost their lives last week. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw.
Thank you, Council Fry. That was indeed a tragic incident. Council Duffy?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Fry, for your comments and your efforts. I do want to say that, you know, this is a small community, and when these things happen, it's a tragedy for all of us, but especially for these young people who we've worked with closely, it hurts, but it is important for us to remember how important it is for us to keep going, to be creative, to do things that will help eliminate these kinds of tragedies in the future, whether it's, you know, schools or community events, whatever, but no effort is wasted that tries to stop this kind of insanity. So, again, I just want to echo your comments and thank everybody who fights every day to try to help people. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. And speaking of our excellent police department, I would like to thank Officer Worley for being with us this evening. Any councilor like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Move consent agenda submitted.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 7-0.
We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 sets of minutes before us. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Movement is submitted.
Vice Mayor Weathers?
As revised.
As revised.
As revised. That's why we have, we did make a change earlier.
Second.
Thank you. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 7-0.
We have an appointment, a vacancy on the Board of Social Services. Council Duffy?
Mayor, as the council representative for the Board of Social Services, I'd like to make a motion recommending Christian Zamas for the Board of Social Services appointment.
Second.
Thank you. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 7-0.
And we thank all of the applicants for that position.
I'd like to point out Mr. Zamas is here tonight. Thank you.
Oh, yes. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much for being here, and thank you for being willing to serve.
Thank you very much for allowing me to.
City manager's agenda, item 11A, I'll call upon Ms. Jett.
Good evening. Today, we're here to ask your approval for an appropriation of $325,000 in the Transit Capital Fund for Fred Regional Transit, five-bus transfer station near the Rappahannock Goodwill Industries facilities. I also have Mr. Arnie Levine here to answer any questions if you have specific questions about the project. Staff recommends approval of this resolution on first reading, and the second reading will be scheduled for August 28th. Fred will construct a five-bus transfer station in Spotsylvania County near the Rappahannock Goodwill Industry facility. Currently, there are five bus lines, two Fredericksburg lines and three Spotsylvania lines, that meet at Stop 26 between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday. These buses meet around a cul-de-sac that's not specifically designed for Fred. Fred has been working closely with RGI and an adjacent property owner in Spotsylvania County to coordinate a safer, permanent design transfer stop. The new transfer stop will be comprised of a paved area with five bus slips and a travel lane, as well as an accessible raised concrete pad and covered shelter for waiting passengers. Moving the stop will open the community to a wide range of employment, educational, and community service opportunities for the people who use the Goodwill Industry facility. This project was supported and endorsed by the Public Transit Advisory Board, which has representatives from all the jurisdictions that Fred serves. Additionally, this project is included in Fred's annual mission, goals, and objectives, and was approved by the Public Transportation Board on July 11th. So, this resolution will appropriate $325,000 in the Transit Capital Fund. Fred plans on receiving a $25,000 proffer from Hazel Land Company, of which $10,000 will be used for the cost of anisement, and $15,000 will be used for project costs. The local share will be provided by balance in the Transit Capital Fund. There's no additional gas tax or general revenue funds that will be required, and federal and state funding will provide the bulk of the project cost, or $273,000. So, I'm here, as well as Mr. Levine, to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Jett?
Madam Mayor, I move first read approving a fiscal year FY 2019 budget amendment appropriating funds to the Transit Capital Fund for the Fredericksburg Regional Transit Fred Bus Transfer Station.
Second. Please cast your votes. Yes, Council Duffy, I'm sorry.
Can you talk to me more about the location of this transfer station?
Sure. I'll have Mr. Levine come up and answer that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This facility will be located off of Spotsylvania Avenue. It abuts the Rappahannock Goodwill facility that is off of Market Street there on Spotsylvania Avenue, trying to think of other.
It's on the other side of Mine Road there.
Old Gallahan's.
It's the Old Gallahan's.
Gallahan's Building.
Is there a reason why Spotsylvania hasn't provided some funds for this?
The policy that we have typically followed with significant capital acquisitions has been that we ask the city to fund them so that there's no question of the title in the event that something should transpire that would cause us to have to abandon or otherwise modify the facility or the fiscal arrangements. That's the case with Fred Central, which is in the city first.
Yeah, it's a little different.
As well as with the Maintenance and Operations Center, which is located in Spotsylvania County.
Would also be appropriate to point out that most of the funding for transit has to come through us, just the way it's set up.
Good question. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All right, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Item 11B, Guidelines Implementing Design Build Contracting Authority, Mr. Whitley.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Item 11B is a one-read resolution required by state law to adopt a new method of procurement called Design Build. Design Build Authority was authorized by the General Assembly in 2017, and it's a very useful procurement tool, and we expect it to be beneficial on several pending projects, including possibly Gateway Boulevard, possibly Executive Plaza HVAC, and possibly VCR Trail Bridge, as well as possible other future projects. So, what is Design Build in this context? What that means is the city would be able to contract with the same firm for both the design of a project and the construction of a project. So, we've done this in the past using PPEA, Public Private Education Act, and PPTA, Public Private Transportation Act, authority. This is different authority under the state code, and so what the state requires us to do is adopt a resolution and guidelines that allow us to do this under the state code. So, there are some key steps with these guidelines. So, the first step in this is to have either in-house or on-contract an engineer or an architect that advises the city regarding the use of Design Build procurement and helps prepare the Request for Proposals documents and evaluating those proposals once we receive them. We would have to issue a written determination that competitive sealed bidding is not the best way to procure a project, that we would use this method instead. Once we make that determination, there's a two-step process. Basically, we issue something called a Request for Qualifications, an RFQ, that describes the project and gets us a shortlist of firms that can actually do the work, both the design and the building piece of it. Once you receive that shortlist, you then issue a Request for Proposals, an RFP, and that decides on which firm is the best one for the city to meet the city's needs. Price is important in that, but the city has some flexibility to select a firm that might be the best fit for the project based on price and qualifications. And we can also negotiate with the firms to ensure that we get a good value and a good fit for the project. So, there's no fiscal impact on the adoption of these guidelines. We think it'll be We think it'll be a very useful tool for us, and we're happy to ask for your consideration. I want to point out that Ms. Enders, our purchasing manager, is here in the audience and is happy to answer questions, as is Mr. Ekstrom, who is our Assistant City Attorney and also helped to work on these guidelines. I'm also happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Whitley. Councilor Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to make sure we stress that this is a tool in the toolbox. We can use it, or we can do normal process. It's just something that's there that gives us another option in looking at projects.
Absolutely.
That's... All right, then I will go ahead and move the resolution.
Councilor Devine had to come up.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I was just curious, because when I read through it, it just seems like those are all the requirements for PPEA and PPTA. So what is the difference? Like, I know that it's another tool, but it just doesn't seem to be a different tool.
I'm going to look at Mr. Ekstrom.
What would be the advantage, I guess, of using this as opposed to PPEA?
It is, there are some slight differences as he moves up.
I think it is how it's applied to us.
So, for example, with PPEA and PPTA, you can solicit proposals, or you can receive unsolicited proposals. This is a little different. We're deciding to solicit a proposal. We have an engineer and architect to help us, you know, make that determination. So it's, there are some slight differences under the code, so this is sort of a different new avenue. There were also some changes to the 2017, in 2017, to the PPTA. So we'll need to look at our guidelines there. This doesn't affect those guidelines, but this sort of will maybe fill in the gaps where some of the PPTA has been changed. But I defer also to Mr. Ekstrom, and I appreciate his thoughts as well.
It's on, I believe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Mr. Whitley said, what really precipitated us moving, asking council to adopt these guidelines, authorizing this additional authority, were changes to the PPTA that made it significantly harder for the city to use that authority. I'd also say that the PPEA and the PPTA define what types of projects may be funded under those sources of statutory authority, and this Design Build Authority is open-ended, as long as it qualifies as a Design Build project. It doesn't have to be a transportation facility under the PPTA, or an educational or other qualifying project under the PPEA. So that's also helpful.
So it broadens our options?
Yes.
To all kinds of projects, if you will?
Yes, that's correct, Madam Mayor.
And it sounds to me as if we are able to use certain contractors in the beginning, from the get-go, to assist us with the solicitation. Is that correct? Did I hear that?
This authority...
Do you hear architects or engineers?
This statutory authority requires us to hire somebody qualified, either an architect or an engineer, who has the expertise particular to this project to advise us as we go through the process.
As you go through.
Yes.
My experience in commercial real estate was this Design Build was a very good way to go for certain kinds of projects. I mean, an economical way to go.
Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Ekstrom, or Mr. Whitley?
Madam Mayor, I move adopting the Guidelines Implementing Design Build Contracting Authority authorized by Chapter forty-three point one of Title two point two of the Code of Virginia.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right. Item eleven C, I will call upon Mr. Craig.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is a resolution regarding initiation of a comp plan amendment. Stadium is proposed in the Celebrate Virginia South development. The stadium would be privately built and owned, with the city supporting the development of the stadium through a long-term lease of the facility. The stadium's primary use would be as the home of a minor league baseball team. The city would also use the stadium for community activities, concerts, high school, college, and amateur athletics, major events, tours, meetings with economic development prospects, and other uses consistent with the sound operation of a professional minor league venue. Code of Virginia fifteen point two, twenty-two thirty-two, requires the comprehensive plan to support the establishment of a new public facility, including this recreation facility. So this is the resolution to initiate the public hearing process to formally amend the comprehensive plan to reflect that. The proposed revisions of the comprehensive plan include establishing the vision for the stadium and surrounding land uses in the Land Use Planning Chapters, thus Chapter ten and eleven of the comprehensive plan, establishing a public facilities policy to support the leasing and public use of a private minor league baseball stadium, that would be in the Public Facilities Chapter, and also adjusting the vision for the transportation improvements in Celebrate Virginia South, from the current focus on the Rappahannock Parkway Toll Road to an interstate interchange serving the stadium feeding into a network of collectors, that's really the change there, to absorb stadium traffic. The exact location of these improvements on the various maps near Packet will be worked through during the technical review. There's options already proposed now that we need to sort out, and one may be no additional roadway. But that is the process that you all are initiating now, to work through that technical look at the road network. This resolution would initiate the technical review and public hearing process. The first public hearing on this item, if initiated this evening, would be before the Planning Commission on September 12th. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Craig?
Madam Mayor, I will move that we initiate an amendment to the 2015 comprehensive plan to support the establishment of a new public recreational facility in Land Use Planning Area One, Celebrate Virginia Central Park, including realignment of the planned road network in Celebrate Virginia South.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, and Mr. Craig, I'll call on you for item eleven D.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a resolution initiating the review process for a UDO text amendment establishing data centers as a use in regulating them in the city's Unified Development Ordinance. The rise of the digital age has produced the need for warehousing, transformation, and processing of digital information. This need is met by dedicating buildings or portions of buildings to computers, servers, telecommunications, and related equipment. It's different from kind of your office server room. These are actually, you know, it's like a Best Buy full of servers that are storing data. That's a good comparison. The size of the operation and the corresponding impact varies. Some are small and can function in an office suite without any external impact at all. Some are housed in independent buildings, like I mentioned, as large as a shopping center. Those require, the larger uses require regulations to properly manage the building's mass scale and potential impact on the city's water supply. We've attached a draft ordinance to the resolution that defines two levels of data center use. One would be small data center, less than ten thousand square feet, and then the second level is data center, which is greater than or equal to ten thousand square feet. Small data centers are proposed to be permitted by right in all commercial mixed-use, non-residential planned development and industrial zoning districts. Data centers, the larger use, are proposed to be permitted by right in the I-2 zoning district and by special use permit in the remaining commercial mixed-use, non-residential planned development and industrial zoning districts. The outline also assigns appropriate development and performance standards to the larger data center use, and they include requiring architectural differentiation of proposed building facades, requiring screening of all mechanical and electrical equipment exterior to the building. And then if one of these facilities, even in I-2 where it's permitted by right, wants to institute a water-based cooling system for their servers, that system would need to be approved by special use permit. The resolution before you all tonight would initiate the technical review and public hearing process for the amendment. If initiated this evening, the first public hearing would be before the Planning Commission on September 12th. I'm happy to take any questions.
Councilor Graham?
Is there a reason we have parking requirements? Do we need parking minimums for this?
That's a good question. We are following the lead of the Northern Virginia localities, and the parking standard that we have is very minimal. We have done a few scenarios and worked out what this requires, and we feel like they're in line with the actual demand, based on a tour that we've done and research of a few facilities. So we're trying to park, less parking for these larger facilities is more, and we're trying to reflect that.
But do we need to include the minimums? Won't they just put in the parking that they need? I mean, is there some sort of risk that we're going to not have the parking if this isn't in here?
That is a good technical question that we can look into. Just things that are popping into my mind. We have minimums in our code, and like I said, we're geared towards less parking is more here. We also have maximums, which is a very interesting provision in the Fredericksburg UDO, are one of the values in our ordinances, that we don't permit people to over-asphalt. And so having a minimum standard, then you can only do so much over the maximum, which is a good protection in some ways for the community. But that's certainly a technical question we can look at as we go through that process.
All right. Thank you.
Councilor Devine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Craig, I know that the water cooling aspect would have to come under a special use permit, but we only talk about the availability of water. What, is there any danger or impact of the discharge of water from water cooling these facilities?
No, ma'am. It's, the major issue here is that they can be, how do I say this right way? Modern technology is air-cooled, but the older water-based systems can withdraw a lot of water, five hundred thousand gallons a day. We have two-point-five million gallons a day surplus in what we are able to withdraw. So, I mean, that's, you know, one-fifth of that for a center that would be about five hundred thousand square feet, which would be pretty big. But, so you can kind of see how we're very focused on water withdrawal. But now, we have the capacity to treat, or we will ensure, make sure, this didn't come up in our initial review, but we'll make sure that we have the capacity to treat water as well.
As follow-up, if you just said that air cool was the way we would do things today, would it be more likely that we would have an air-cooled facility?
We've, working with the economic development folks, they get requests for both. The facility that we went and toured was very modern, and it was air-cooled, and it was a very interesting sight to see. It was less architecture, more industrial engineering. But the older way of doing this was to just withdraw a ton of water and run it through your servers. So there's some of these facilities still operating in that fashion, and we wanted to have a check on that, where we permitted this larger center by right in I-2 to make sure that we were capturing that externality, if someone came in and wanted to do that, that we actually had the water available for them to run their system.
One more, is it, I'm sorry, because I know it's a special use permit at the time, if we ever get this, but is the water not recirculated at all either? It would be fresh drawn water?
It is. From what I understand, this isn't a consistent five hundred thousand gallon a day withdrawal. You know, is it once a month? Is it twice a month? And it circulates through their system, but then they have to flush their system, and they pull five hundred thousand gallons that day. And that's how our system is set up, water withdrawal per day. You've got to work on the peak load.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? It's a lot to learn. And I appreciate the question, both about the water and the parking, because we actually do worry about asphalting the world.
Madam...
Because we have, so we have a maximum, that's why we have a maximum. Yep.
Madam Mayor, I'll request approval of a resolution initiating amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance to define, permit, and regulate small data centers and data centers.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right. Item eleven E, regarding our small area plan for Planning Area Six, I'll call upon Susanna Finn.
So the resolution before you tonight is to initiate the process to amend the comprehensive plan for Small Area Plan Six. This includes changes to Chapter ten, which is the introduction or General Land Use Plan Section, and Chapter eleven, which is the specific small area plans. So the biggest change to Chapter ten will be the introduction of two new transects, which will be the T-four M and T-five M transects, two different levels of residential intensity, but both part of the Maker District of Area Six. So just to hit on a few highlights of what you'll see in the Small Area Plan, the first is really an emphasis on neighborhood protection. So we have the T-three E and T-three neighborhoods in Area Six, our single-family residential neighborhoods, and we want to protect those. And so we've highlighted them here in the plan as being eligible for pattern books and conservation districts to really encourage their protection, as well any new development along corridors, we've put in language to defer to their protection, so that's something that we're very strong about. The other large component of the Area Six Small Area Plan is the Maker District, and again, this has the T-four M and T-five M transects. It's made up of a unique feature of defining the urban fabric, which is corridors, nodes, and third spaces. So along our corridors, which is where we want to concentrate our commercial opportunities of Falkel Avenue, Route One, and Princess Anne Street, we may have variations in our urban fabric that really support a modern manufacturing and urban maker economy. And so those will be separate elements from our nodes, where we have a stronger emphasis on pedestrian infrastructure and pedestrian-scale-built development. But then these will be tied together by third spaces, which are our trails and our green spaces and our plazas. And so these three elements, corridors, nodes, and third spaces, create a unified district. A key element to the Maker District is the identification of the contributing structures. And these are thirty mid-century structures that really represent the character of the district. And so to incentivize the preservation of these structures, we've created the Transfer of Development Rights Program, which we believe will place development pressure that may be felt in these smaller mid-century buildings, and be able to transfer them to more appropriate redevelopment opportunities like empty parking lots and old shopping centers. There's a lot of questions about the details of the TDR program, which will all be fleshed out in time, but in general, I just wanted to go over what we're thinking right at this point. So as I said earlier, the T-four M and T-five M are two different scales of intensity. So by right in T-four, thinking of eight units per acre, with sixteen units per acre if someone were to do TDR or affordable housing, both two key goals of the Area Six Small Area Plan. And subsequently, those numbers in the T-five area would be twelve and twenty-four units per acre. So the question is, what number of units are we really talking about? And so between the T-four and T-five M transects, we would be allowing three, three hundred and eleven units to be transferred. So this isn't creating any more units, but it's moving it from environmentally sensitive areas and these contributing structures into more appropriate development locations. There's also an opportunity for max densities to be established above the twelve and twenty-four by council, where projects address the following items that we felt to be the key points of the Area Six Small Area Plan. And these are preservations of existing structures, the transfer of development rights, affordable housing, and then a mixed-use scenario, so that we can make sure that we're emphasizing a proper ratio of commercial and residential opportunities, because that is important to maintain this as a commercial center, but also a residential growth area. So if initiated tonight, the resolution, we would refer this to the Planning Commission for the public hearing on September 12th. They would make a recommendation, and it would return to you all for your consideration. Thank you. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Finn?
Madam Mayor?
Vice Mayor Withers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, Ms. Finn, Mr. Craig, Mr. Johnson, thank you for all the time you've spent with me over the last several days and actually a few weeks, trying to make me understand how this works. Let me start before I ask questions. One of my concerns has been, you know, we have very limited commercial space left in the city, and a lot of that space lately has been souped up by apartment buildings. I think we all know, or townhouse buildings, or that kind of thing. So I guess, and plus the fact that I was not really aware of, I think Mr. Craig tried to tell me this some months ago, until I actually went back and went through the comp plan and the zoning. Actually, shopping center, all of our CT zoning, I'm sorry, C-eight zoning and CS zoning now has apartment buildings by right. In other words, somebody could come in and buy the old Fredericksburg shopping center, should it go downhill, and I guess it's seven, eight, ten acres up there, and build, right now, tear down the old buildings and build X number of apartments based on that. You know, we've been, we talk about homeowner... You know, we've been, we talk about homeownership when we talk about rentals. I can't see adding additional, encouraging additional apartments in our, in these zones. It just doesn't fly with me. Let me ask you this, Ms. Finn, and you and I have talked a little bit about this. How does, how does, how does this new district improve our chances of getting more, more space? I assume that once we get this done, we will encourage a mixed use where the existing zoning does not. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, as we've designed it right now, the Maker District and the Maker zoning that will follow actually broadens the opportunities for use. So, things that wouldn't necessarily be allowed in the C8 zoning district would now be in a more integrated fashion.
Well, what we are, what we are sending forward tonight is, or propose to send forward tonight, is sending this to planning for the, the change in the comp plan. But that does not face the issues of how the zoning is going to be later. Is that correct? In other words, that will be the second phase?
Right. So, the first step is to make the changes to the comprehensive plan, to set the broader vision and policy statements, so then we can then go in and make those detailed changes for the ordinances. Yes.
I would hope that if council decides to go forward with this tonight, that they would make the effective date of this effective when the second phase has been approved by the council. So, it's not to get this comp plan out there and have really not a whole lot of control over until we get the second phase approved. Is that, does that make sense?
Certainly an option.
Okay. All right. I would also, you know, there's, one particular parcel, and I don't think it's any secret, I've talked about this, one particular parcel that is extremely environmentally sensitive, my guess is it would be almost impossible to build on it, and if it is, it's going to be so costly that you're going to end up with probably multimillion-dollar units. I can't, I can't see transferring those rights to a good land when we don't, getting more apartments when the prospect of that being built is probably nil. That's building on that river, and in the floodway, not the floodplain, is going to be really difficult. So, I would hope council, if they decide to go with this, will exclude environmentally sensitive areas that are most likely not going to be built on start with. So, why pile more apartments on us for that, for that particular right? What's, what's the advantage of the TDR? What's the advantage of that? Why are we doing, why are we doing that?
The advantage of the TDR, as we see it, is to incentivize preservation of structures that in 20 years, given a changing revitalization of the area, may face increasing developmental pressure. So, the defining features of the corridor, small little automotive service industries, really create the feeling of the Princess Anne Street corridor. But in 30 years, with the rapidly changing market, as the market report for the Area 6 plan told us, may not exist, and it would really be a loss for our urban fabric.
You know, Maker's District sounds good. That's, that's really a low-intensity industrial.
It's a, it's a modern maker economy.
Right, right. And my guess is it's pretty low-income-type job work. Is that, would that be fair?
Oh, not at all. As we've envisioned it, it runs the full gamut of, you know, making chairs to high-tech computer security jobs. Any kind of entrepreneurial elements.
So, so could, could we limit the type of uses that could be in that Maker's District to, it appears that we have lots of low, with our average income in the city of Fredericksburg, it would certainly appear that we have lots of low-wage jobs. I'm not sure we should, I'm just wondering why we would push more of that. Wait a minute, I'm not done.
Two parts to this.
Just getting along.
Yeah, the, what we're in control of is the land use market, and there is such creativity out there now that currently can't find a place to operate. So, we want to broaden the permitted uses so that we're not excluding the new kind of economy that's growing. The second piece of this plan, which we're getting a community group together to get together and create basically their own Main Street district, would be what type of grants are they going to go and get? What type of incentives are they going to ask to put towards higher-paying jobs or a focus on high-tech industries? And that's beyond kind of the land use market. So, there's two parts there, but absolutely, that's part of the strategy, and we've started having the meetings. Thank you very much for coming to the second one that we had at Dorothy Hart Community Center, and the third one is August 23rd.
And I'll be there for that one, too.
Excellent. But that's going to be what, whatever that group decides their focus is going to be what they're going to go out and get. That's, that's part of the plan.
But, you know, when Matt and I did the Princess Anne corridor thing, what, back in 2004, '05, I guess, we envisioned some of these older buildings being gone, or either being really upgraded. So, my concern is if we, if we put low-end, some low-end units in there, that they're, the rents are going to be low, and those, those units are going to continue to, those buildings are going to continue to be, to be like this. That's, that's just my thinking now. So, so that's where I am with that. TDRs. I would hope that if council approves this going forward, that again, we do the coordinated timeframe where all of it's done, all of it takes effect at one time. I would also hope, when I asked Ms. Finn today about all these zoning things, who was going to make those decisions? I think that was yesterday, maybe. You said that, that has not been determined as of yet. So, in other words.
The details of the zoning changes?
No, yeah, once, once the, once the plan is in place, if a development comes in, who makes the decision on whether that fits the, the, these new transit areas?
Until the zoning changes are in place, they wouldn't be able to take advantage of what we're proposing as a policy in the comprehensive plan.
But, but I mean, we're not going to have any lockstep formula for the number of commercial spaces as opposed to the number of residential units that are in that space. Is that correct? That's going to be, that's going to be determined per development in that area? In other words, if I come to you and say, I'm, once, once we've done all of this, I've got a plan for the old Fredericksburg Shopping Center. This is my plan. I'm going to tear it down. I'm going to do the general overlay that you said, I'm going to have commercial, I'm going to layer everything back to Normandy Village, just like it's called for.
Sounds perfect.
But who approves that plan?
It would probably depend at what density they came in at. So, if you want to take one more.
The comprehensive plan is a vision for the future, but they, they cannot get a site plan approved based on these policies until we amend the zoning.
Right. But, but once that's done, then who approves that?
That'll depend on, on how that zoning is structured. Maybe I'm losing you there.
Well, somewhere along the line, I've gotten the feeling that some of that stuff could be done administratively.
Well, that's, that's a, that's a question that needs to be answered, absolutely. Chuck, did you want to?
I think what you're getting to, Mr. Withers, is we've talked about ranges of density in the plan that says if it's a modest level of density, at least what we think is a modest level of density.
Right.
It could be done administratively. But if it gets to anything over, at least on the Fredericksburg Shopping Center property, over 20 units per acre, it would require council review.
Well, and see, that's, that's a problem for me. What you think, what planning thinks is, is appropriate, it might not be what the city of Fredericksburg residents think is appropriate. So, I'm concerned anytime that, that a large project is turned over to staff rather than be subject to public hearing and, and the decision made by council. And I know you want a streamlined process, and I'm all in on that, but, but that's a concern to me. So, I, I, I hope that those are things that we can work through as we go forward.
Just, just to clarify, Mr. Withers, just for anyone who may be listening, what we would be speaking of is projects that would be using the transfer of development rights. It would not be a net increase of density for a particular property. It'd only be the transfer of units up to a certain level could be done administratively, not the creation of new units. I mean, let me just clarify that, that was our intent.
But, but the project itself, the way it looked, the way it's laid out, the materials that are used, are those going to be covered in the?
And that would be covered in the form-based codes that, that you would be adopting if the policies are put in place.
We hope to bring the first one to you next meeting. So, you can, it's a foreign concept, what's a form-based code, and that's kind of what you and I have been talking a lot about. I think once you see this, you'll make, you all as a council, if you want to adopt this, will make decisions on, you know, how these are going to transition, what the, what the form of the building is going to be up front. And then, it doesn't leave a lot left to, to need to be decided on a case-by-case basis. But.
And, and as I've told you all, I like this concept. I love this concept, but, but I want to make sure that this council understands what we're, what we're agreeing to when, when we do this, because it sounds like it's done administratively. Once we do all of this, it's, it's up to you guys. We don't get to see it again. So, that's, I, I, I'm going to probably support this, sending it off with the conditions that I've, that I've, I won't, I can't support it unless those conditions are met, that, that we don't, we don't, we tie this all together at the end, that the city has, the council has the right to approve TDRs, and that the environmentally sensitive areas of land are not included, because they're probably not going to be built on. I hate to see us add more apartment buildings because, you know, to additional land. So, I'm willing to take a look and send this on if council agrees to, you know, to those conditions. And like I say, the effective dates coincide. We, when, when we approve this, we also have the transit, all of that, all of that laid out. Thank you for indulging me, all of you, and the mayor, and Mr. Kelly, I know you've had to go, so I'm going to turn it over. Thank you.
I'll call on Mr. Johnson first.
Mr. Withers, we're certainly, as from staff, very willing to factor your concerns into the discussions. I'm, I'm a little hesitant, though, to say that this plan is automatically going to be modified tonight to reflect those particular issues. I, I think those are particular issues that should be discussed and, and, and at the planning commission level, and when it comes back to council. I would hate you to put us in a straitjacket of saying, well, those three or four things just have to be done.
That's, that's a point well-taken. I don't disagree with that, but I, I would hope that, that it would be, would be brought up. I will certainly make some planning commissions aware of my, my thoughts on that.
Certainly, certainly. I totally get that we ought to be talking about those issues, but I would hate to sort of close the door on all those issues tonight before we sort of have the public hearing.
Again, that's a point well-taken, and I will, I will, I will go with that, knowing that I could, whatever you come back with, I've got the right to vote for or against.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very good questions by the vice mayor, but I do believe that this is the beginning of a discussion, and there are still a lot of moving parts to this. Just out of curiosity, where are we with the TDR? Is that's going to be a key part of this in the general discussion?
Well, we, this certainly will definitely involve the participation of the city attorney, and we've begun discussions with her on this, and we will continue those as we move along to, to come up with the appropriate, specific mechanisms. It is something allowed by state code. It has been done in an urban jurisdiction in the state, so we have that model to follow as well as rural models that can help from a process standpoint. So, we are, we're working on it.
So, we'd have no timeline this time, when anything's going to be brought to the council?
Well, it's all dependent on whether the policy becomes something that eventually gets adopted, and then we would, it is not our intent to drag our feet on any of this.
No, I'm not, I'm not even saying, I just was trying to get a sense of where, because that frankly, in this whole thing, is kind of a key component to this whole discussion.
We would hope this would be resolved over a matter of months.
Some of the interesting things that the vice mayor brought up and concerned about type of development, everything else like that, one of the aspects of this proposal that we're talking about doing is, I think we are actually doing more to be defining what we want in these areas. And I hope, as we were discussing Valvoline and 7-Elevens, and we're also discussing what's going on at Vogel Home Parks and things like that, we have this tendency for a long time of saying, when projects come forward, well, we don't like that. And the question's asked to us, well, what do you want? And the usual response from us is, well, we want something better, which frankly, is a meaningless statement. So, I do hope in the course of this conversation, we finally have that robust discussion on what are we looking at as a community? What do we want? And making sure we do it. But in doing that, I think one of the biggest issues, I don't think we can use zoning as basically a hammer and say, well, we're not going to allow this, and we're not going to allow that, because there are so many things that go on in business and development, including what we want, that it's going to require a very proactive effort on our part. And one of those things is going to be trade-offs. You know, okay, we want to protect this, but if we want to protect this, then financially to make that viable, they're going to have to be able to do something. And we're going to need to have the mechanism in place, and I think TDR is one to do that. The mention was, well, we should not allow development on that property. Well, I don't think the courts would allow us to say that unless the city attorney tells me otherwise. If a private property owner owns property, there are rules and regulations, floodplain issues, and everything else they've got to deal with, but we can never tell somebody, I'm sorry, you cannot use or develop your property in some way, and this is something really small and nasty. Since the Commonwealth of Virginia, we're one of the most strongest property-light states in the Commonwealth. But understanding that, you know, we can work with the development community to say, all right, we really want to protect that as a community asset, so we're going to have to give you the opportunity to do something else. I understand the dangers of going down this road, and we'll have to be very careful, but I do think the realities of dealing with the current climate is, we're going to have to, if you want, if we want this, and this is truly what we want, then we're going to have to look at doing this to help it make it happen, either investment or whatever else it's going to be. We can't, again, continue to find ourselves in situations like we did tonight, which is, well, nobody likes Valvoline, nobody wants the 7-Eleven, but they brought it forward to it, and all we can tell them is, no, we don't want that, without coming back and saying, what do we want? How do we want it to make it happen? But anyway, so we still got to work with the TDR situation. Currently, mixed-use development is pretty much approved by us. As, as it goes forward, this is currently done, and we can always, if you wanted to do, we can talk about keeping it that way. But again, I think this is the beginning of a good discussion. I think it's a discussion that can go into some areas that we really need to be talking about, on how we want downtown to be. I think we all got the notice on the One Hanover project. That would be an interesting one to really sit down and look at. You know, it's a great project, but there's financial issues to it. You know, how do we, or can we accommodate those issues to bring forward a project? And I think most people looking at it thought it was a pretty darn good project, especially when it's right down on our riverfront area, and it was a nice-looking building, the brand was nice, and everything else like that. But again, the numbers didn't work. It's density issue, it's parking issues, it's the mixed-use issues that they had to overcome. So, you know, frankly, I hope we can have a good discussion with that project, which I think would come over into our discussions, into what we're planning in these zones, and I really look forward to having these discussions. Thank you.
Counsel, vice mayor Withers.
I hope, I hope nobody interpreted my meaning to say that we would not allow a certain use on the property. I certainly didn't intend that. So, I, I don't know where that came from, but.
You mentioned on the river, they shouldn't be allowed.
No, no, I didn't say that. I said, I don't believe it will be built on the river because of the cost and because, because of the restrictions there. No, I, I mean, I say go for it.
It should be allowed TDR switching from there to any place else.
No, because I, I think it's, and the second point is, I don't think anybody said tonight that they didn't like 7-Elevens or whatever. I think the only, only point was made was, was the entrance.
Where are we with this? This, this is a very ambitious plan. This is a very ambitious plan that we're doing, and it involves a lot of new concepts and a lot of complicated concepts, but I think they're, they're very forward-looking for the future of the city, these small area plans. And I appreciate all, all the questions. I have questions, too, about how TDRs will work in a small city, but you, you, you've explored that, and that's all of which will have to be defined as we go forward. So the step that we're taking tonight, Ms. Finn, is that we are sending this to the Planning Commission.
That's correct.
And many of these questions will be ironed out and developed.
And then brought back to the council.
Counselor Duffy?
Thank you, Mayor. Good discussion tonight. I want to say that this does give us a great opportunity to think about the development of our city, especially of these underused areas along the Princess Anne Street corridor. I encourage everyone to get involved in these, you know, these Maker District conversations are pretty interesting. And one of the references I heard made at the last one is that we could create out of this district some of the up-and-coming neighborhoods, coming up in Richmond, for example, Scott's Edition and things like that. And I think that if we can find a way to develop this part of the city that doesn't erase what was there, you know, and I, and I think this has great promise for bringing in development that we say adds to the city and adds to the character of the city and doesn't erase it. So I think it's great, and I really appreciate staff's effort on this, and again, encourage everybody to get involved and attend these meetings and, and help us develop the way we need to. Thank you.
So we need a motion to initiate an amendment.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution initiating an amendment to the 2015 Comprehensive Plan, amend Chapter 11, Planning Areas, to adopt a new small area plan for Planning Area Six.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. I'll call upon our city manager for his update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'll just quickly update on a couple of issues. We do have a community discussion with the International Coalition of Sites of Conscience. They'll be back with us for what we call Phase Two of the conversation related to the slave auction block. These meetings will happen on August 23rd and August 24th. August 23rd will be at 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., and August 24th will be noon to 2:00, with a second meeting that day, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. Both meetings will be, I'm sorry, all three meetings will be held at Walker Grant Center, 210 Ferdinand Street in the city of Fredericksburg. So please join us one and all for one of those three conversations. Again, this is Phase Two of a three-phased conversation that we're having related to the slave auction block and African-American history in our city. The Phase One report, I'll also highlight, has been posted to our website today, I believe, so that is now available for folks to review. Again, the Phase One report is on our website at fredericksburgva.gov. Also highlight the fact that Potomac Nationals will be here, the ownership will be here for a community meeting on September 5th at 7:00 p.m. Please join us for that conversation. Again, the ownership will be here to talk about the project and about their forward progress to make a stadium a reality here in the city. That meeting will be held at Dorothy Hart Community Center located at 408 Canal Street, again, September 5th at 7:00 p.m. Also suggest that folks, still a couple of tickets left, I understand, for the Urban Slide, which will happen on September 1st. That's a 1,000-foot water slide that'll be placed temporarily, of course, on Hanover Street between Jepson Center and Sunkenwell Tavern. So that's going to be a great community event, co-hosted by the Fredericksburg Economic Development Authority and the University of Mary Washington. Again, a great community effort. Hope folks can join us for that. I'll also thank folks for their patience in our cleanup. We've had some, obviously, some, some weather this summer that has sidetracked us a bit on City Dock as well as Old Mill Park. I will announce that the Old Mill Park rest rooms have been renovated and are now reopened for use. Again, I appreciate folks' patience as we've worked to clean up those two sites repeatedly this, this summer. Also, thank the Parks Department specifically for Camp Spirit. Camp Spirit was hosted for the first time this summer. It was really focused on attracting children with intellectual disabilities and autism-spectrum disorders, and more than 100 children participated in this, this year's camp, and obviously we're looking forward to repeating that success next year. Lastly, I'll tell folks that obviously we're very focused on litter prevention in our community, but also on efforts by the community to, to help us control litter. We have new trash grabber stations on our trails, so folks should feel free to participate, obviously, in helping city staff keep our, our trails clean. Again, I appreciate folks' participation in that. We have some very active citizens helping us do that every day. If we had more, we would certainly be litter-free. So thanks, folks, for participating in that. With that, Madam Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for, for Mr. Barudy? I'll remind the council of our work session on Thursday evening regarding the Riverfront Park as the topic. Your calendar is attached, and we do need a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Mayor, I move that we moved into closed session under Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A3 in order to discuss acquisition of real property for a public purpose.
Excuse me, mister, we've already done that.
I thought we had to do the whole thing anyway.
I know.
Thank goodness.
No, you don't have to do that. We actually have held that closed session, so we need the second...
Best news he's had.
Best news you've had.
The motion would start with a motion to go into closed session under 2.2371A1 to discuss the performance of the city manager.
Got it. Thank you. Madam Mayor, move to go into closed session under Section 2.2-3711A1 to discuss the performance of specific appointees of the city council, specifically the city manager.
Yeah, this is the annual, annual review. Thank you.
Take your votes? Can you take your votes? I'm waiting for the votes. Waiting for the votes. Motion passes 7-0.